Place ourselves in God's presence. God our Father and our Creator, you made the world and filled it with marvelous signs of your power. You blessed human toil from the very beginning so that in modest imitation of your own goodness, we might diligently devote ourselves to bringing creation to its perfection. By working as a carpenter, your son enhanced the dignity of human labor and in a wonderful way, joined us through our own toil to the work of redemption. Grant that all who plan and conduct business in this chamber may through your guidance and support, come to right decisions and carry them out fairly. Make them content in their dedication to bettering the human family in praise of your name and bless them with a renewed sense of their own dignity. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord.
Please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul Morris. We appreciate it. It keeps us out of trouble when we follow the rules on our prayer. And we appreciate you coming and spending a few minutes with us. And I appreciate Mr. Marcy taking the lead on that there. We'll go ahead and open up the table first on the agenda here. Open up the regular meeting of the Clinton Hospital Authority and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
Second, trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Roto.
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes.
First item matter, consider quitclaim D to transfer the clinic property to the city of Clinton. There we go. Steve, if you get this over, you get more.
Counsel, our HMA contract has the, was with the city council and the clinic, which is part of that contract, is currently sitting in the hospital authority. This is a housekeeping item to move this from the office to the city council to comply to that contract.
Any questions or comments?
I forgot after we do this, what's going to happen to this property? They're going to use it or lease it or what?
They're leasing it. Yes.
They're all doing that.
It's actually in the 98 lease. It's in the 98 lease. It's been a part of the hospital process since we acquired it. Somehow it ended up in the hospital authority instead of under the city of Clinton. Nobody ever caught it until they went to get that insurance.
So this is all we're doing is proving it for one. That's all.
Any other questions for Steve or counsel? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this particular item? Not seeing any entertain motion to approve this quitclaim transfer of property from the hospital authority to the clinic.
Second.
Trustee Roto.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Smith. And Chairman.
City manager report for the Clinton Hospital Authority.
Do not have one.
And any audience participation under the Clinton Hospital Authority. It would be your opportunity if you have an item under the hospital authority to bring it up. If not, general items, we have a spot in our city council meeting. We'd be glad to have you with your question or opinion at that time. Not seeing any entertain motion to adjourn the Clinton Hospital Authority.
Agreed. Second.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Roto.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes.
Moving on to the Clinton Public Works Authority, we'll go ahead and open that up. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
Second. Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Roto.
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. First action item, affirm expenditure by Clinton Public Schools Board of Education to Jody Hall, general contractor for school construction. We've had several of these flow-through facilitation payments. Steve, you move the comments.
Just continue with the comment. I think it's about over at the very end of the contract.
There are three pages. I would continue. Sometimes I take the one through. And any questions or comments by counsel? Questions or comments by anyone in the audience related to this particular item? Not seeing any, entertain motion to approve the expenditure by the Clinton Public Schools Board of Education.
Second.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Roto.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. Next action item, consider Garber Engineers' presentation regarding long-term water supply evaluation. I know we've waited for a while here with Garber to have a chance to interview them. So we have them here today. And turn it over to you, Steve. Give the comments.
I just want to introduce Michael Gray with Garber Engineering. As you know, counsel, we had a.
Can you switch over to you?
You bet. And we asked for a long-term water plan to evaluate our water situation here in Clinton, which is very critical in the future. And so we completed that and we need your feedback. And let's turn it over to Michael.
Thanks, Steve. In addition to the great opening remarks and prayer to this meeting today, I assume like a lot of folks in Oklahoma, there's a lot of folks in this community that are praying for rain. The guys have been blessed a little bit lately and hopefully that continues. As part of this study, we're monitoring the Mezzaneta and so forth and the watershed as well as going proper to help or just to keep an eye on how water usage affects the ratings as we're going into the summer. See that right there? Is it okay if I stand here? Can you be down light? Okay, well, let's just jump right into this. And I'm going to try to, I'm not going to go too quickly. I want to make sure that we capture everything that is most important with regards to the study. But I also want to take as much time as necessary. I know this is a formal meeting, it's a public meeting, but I want to encourage you guys to stop and ask questions at any time during the presentation so that we can move forward with hopefully everybody on the same page. Start with just kind of defining the problem. How did we get where we're at today? Before I jump into that data there, though, I want to say that long-term water supply planning is a normal part of any community planning process. It's if not the most, one of your most valuable assets to your citizens. And so a long-term water supply plan is something that a lot of communities do regardless of the situation that they're in with their current water supply resources. But we have a current problem today that is exceptional. Look at this chart with me or this graph with me, if you will. On the left-hand side of that graph is inches of rainfall and it's also days of the year. The first two bars, the first blue bar and the first red bar, represent in the blue bar, the average amount of rainfall expected in your region versus the 2011 rainfall that you actually received. That was exceptional. That rivals any historic data that has been collected to date with regard to the low amounts of rainfall which we've received. The next column represents the heat that we experienced last year. This is the number of days that the temperature was greater than 100 degrees. The average for this region is about 20. When back in 2011, you received 77 days of temperature greater than 100 degrees. And finally, the bars on the far right are referenced to the axis on the far right, which is a million gallons of water. If, we've been here before and talked to you about some emergency planning. We talked a little bit about the management strategy and how the city was using Clint Lake's withdrawal of water from Clint Lake during 2010 and 2011. A very cost-effective approach, trying to minimize costs. The cost associated with purchasing water from Boss and relying a little bit more on the lake itself resulted in an actual usage of about 961 million gallons of water.
For the year or for?
That's for the year.
That is, okay.
And the, if you look at a different management strategy where you can more rely heavily on Foss within the terms of your contract with Foss, all that was actually required to be used was 219 million gallons. Now, of course, what it costs you more if you have to pay for that Foss water. It's more expensive than the treated, your own water treatment plant actually. Certainly some management strategy that balances out those two bars on the far right is where you ultimately want to end up. So this is a picture of a perfect storm. You've got overutilization of the lake. You've got excessive days of high temperature and therefore increased evaporation from the lake. And you've got exceptionally low rainfall, therefore no inflow or replacement of that into the lake. Before I go any further, I'm going to probably rely on these guys a little bit tonight. So I probably should introduce them. Shane Smith is the project manager for the project. Ian Toody is the project engineer. All three of us are residing in our current office. So the big picture, Garber was asked to evaluate an emergency water supply alternative for Clint Lake. The first thing that we endeavored to do was try to revitalize some water rights that you have in the Burns Flat wellfield. We did a quick analysis of that and resulted in a lot of expenditures for a very little volume of water from that supply. Moved on to Work Order 15, which was then broken up into two parts. One was an emergency evaluation. If you guys remember, I was here a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago to discuss some emergency options, which included some mobile water treatment plants, pulling water out of the Washtau River and injecting water from the Rush Springs Aquifer and so forth. Again, the sum and substance of that part of the valuation was to, the costs associated with those emergency items were not really worth the volume of water long-term that you were going to be able to realize. So we stressed that you guys move forward with some conservation efforts as part of that presentation. And then the last part of Work Order 15, which we're here to present tonight, is the long-term master planning study that expands your water supply portfolio to prevent further drought, drought crisis. So the first thing we do when we look at long-term water supply planning is we look at population estimates. Data that we use to generate this projection, this population projection, is based on census data, Department of Commerce data, county data, and then some just population, algorithms, mathematics and so forth to find out which of those three scenarios your community fits the best. And you'll see here that 2010 census data resulted in about a 9,000-person population. And the 2060, the 50-year plan only identifies roughly 500 additional residents.
Does that seem realistic?
Or water usage.
I mean, that seems.
It seems a little low. It's only about a 5% increase over the next 50 years. Seems a little low, but again, that takes into account historical growth. And you guys have certainly had booms and then valleys. But it does seem a little bit light, but just bear with me, okay? We're going to adjust that here in just a second. So what that, if you take a look at the 2010 population and you compare that to your current water usage, you're averaging about 2 million gallons per day right now. That's the water usage that you sent to Clinton citizens divided by 365 days a year. That's the average. The max day is the peak amount, the single one day where you produced the largest combination of water, be it from the lake or from Boss, plus Foss. And that resulted in a flow rate of 4.2 million gallons per day. That means that a certain, for those 9,000 people, a certain per capita usage, so many gallons per day per person is realized right now. We've held that gallons per day per person usage constant. And it's hot. Your gallons per day per usage per person is high compared to a lot of communities you're at. Which is good for revenue.
Why is that? Do you know that?
Yeah. I know a lot of irrigation usage here. They have, well, you certainly have industrial use that contributes to that. But we held that constant even though it's hot. So there's a little bit of a buffer factor in there for you moving forward. If the community decides to implement more conservation or just citizens in general decide to use less water, use different landscaping techniques and so forth. Nonetheless, we held that usage constant moving forward 25 years to take a look at it at 2037 and then again 50 years out to take a look at it at 2062. 2062 numbers result in an average day need for the city of Clinton of 2.17 million gallons per day and a peak day need of 4.4 million gallons per day. Now, Mr. Marcy, you pointed out that the growth rate seems a little bit slow. Well, it's proven at some point, or sometimes in communities, that feel like their growth rate may be a little bit low or maybe they just want to, they want to do more besides grow their population. They want to recruit industry, water parks, things like that, that increase the usage per capita. That's called a reserve capacity. A lot of master plans identify a certain amount of future flow that they can't attribute to their residents. But they want to plan to have that future flow if they could recruit industry or if there's oil and natural gas stuff going on and there's a big spike in usage. So we've taken a look at that. For communities that are similar to you, typically a 10 to 30% reserve capacity is realized or planned for, we have assumed a 20% reserve capacity for your future planning efforts. You tack that 20% reserve on there. Let's focus in on the 2062 bars because that's what we're going to be talking about moving forward. Your average day, that's the total water that Clinton uses regardless of the source, divided by 365 days, is estimated to be 2.6 million gallons. And the max day, the peak day usage, 5.3 million gallons per day. Two types of flows I've talked about. Talked about average day flow and I've talked about max day flow. Water supply, reservoirs, aquifers, things of that nature, are typically planned around using your average day flow rates because there's a big pool of water there to store on a continuous basis. So you can feed it continuously at a lower rate because you have a wide spot in the line from which to pull out of. With regard to max day, max day is what you have to, the infrastructure that you have to develop to actually deliver the water, whether it be pumping, treatment or storage, you have to actually meet that consumer need on that max day. So we plan infrastructure costs around a max day. And we plan reservoirs, terminal reservoirs, long-term storage or aquifers on an average day if they have that wide spot in the line. You guys with me on that? For the average day demand, recall from the previous slide, the 2062 average day demand was 2.6 million gallons per day. We're going to carry that forward throughout the rest of the presentation. With regards to the max day, there has not been a full-blown safe yield analysis ever done on Clint Lake. There was a lot of good yield analysis, a lot of previous study done 30 years ago.
In the late 70s.
Late, in the late 70s. But a lot of things have changed with regard to that lake as well as the techniques used to do yield analysis over that time, that horizon. This study did not include a detailed yield analysis of Clint Lake.
What do you mean when you say yield analysis exactly?
What is the safe amount of water that you can always plan on getting out of that lake?
No matter what the weather it is or what.
Taking into account historical droughts like we just discussed. What's required to do that is, right now is a great time to do it, by the way. A survey of the lake so that you can identify the volume that's available to store. There's been a lot of silting in of the lake since it was originally constructed and since previous analysis were done. There's no gauge on the lake. There's no accurate measurement of how much level is in the lake. There's a lot of knowledge from the operations staff, but there's no real accurate measurement of how much it increases after rainfalls and runoffs and so forth and how much it depletes after high demand periods and the water treatment plant pulls it out. So you'll hear this again at the end. We're recommending that you do a detailed, full-blown, safe yield analysis now while the lake is low. Because we don't have that data, when we look at maximum day scenarios moving forward in this presentation, we have to assume, we have to make an assumption about what Clint Lake can provide you in that max day scenario. What's it providing you today? Zero. So our, from here on out, this is a little bit conservative, not too conservative, because we're experiencing it right now. But in all the max day analysis forward, we're going to assume that you are in the same condition that you're in right now. And you cannot get water out of the lake. Those max day scenarios will be based around a future flow rate of 5.3 million gallons per day. We talked to you a couple of months ago about Foss, how much they can provide. That's 2.19 million gallons per day. There's a little bit of assumption in that factor. We don't know everything that there is to know about the Foss water treatment plant. We know a lot about it, but we don't know everything. There may be shortfalls that we're not aware of. There may be reserve capacity there that we're not aware of. But based on the data that we have, we are comfortable estimating that you can get 2.19 million gallons per day from Foss. And that differs too. It depends on what time of year. The type of treatment plant that they have is very susceptible to changes in water temperature. They can produce a whole lot more water in the summertime than they can in the wintertime, which is good for you. So we'll just kind of leave that at that and plan around the 2.19 million gallons per day from Foss. So on a max day at 5.3 MGD, you have a deficit of a little over 3 million gallons per day. That's a lot of words and talking and is everybody kind of on the same page there?
So you're saying right now, this summer, we may be short that for this summer or not?
Could be.
Could be that much?
And we showed that. Well, the 5.3 million is in 2016.
That's right, okay.
We showed what your estimated shortage would be this summer at that previous presentation. I think that graph was actually.
I forgot how much that was.
There was.
A couple million?
It's a big, I think it was almost a million.
It was around, yeah.
There was three, remember there was three months in the summer where you couldn't, where Foss couldn't get you and we were recommending conservation to help trim that down?
Correct. I think irrigation's fine.
Nice question. Yes, sir. I want to make sure that I'm, I want to back it just a second. You're basing this maximum day demand on the fact that we're going to be using zero gallons of water from Clint Lake because at this point, we don't have a survey, we don't have enough analysis and data to support any verifiable. I can't support that you could even get half a million gallons a day out of there because you can't right now. Right? And just to drive that home a little bit more, so because it's not available to you, you have to go find 3 million more gallons in addition to the 2.19 you get from Foss. Right?
But that's in 2062.
That's in 2062, yes, sir. So what water supply sources did we evaluate as part of this long-term plan? Well, we chose four different sources and we broke those four different sources down into two categories. An average day category and a max day category. Okay? What are the four sources? One is the Foss water treatment plant. This is drinking water from Foss. What can we do there to help long-term? Two is a new source. It's still a Foss, but it's not treated water. It's raw water from Foss, pumping raw water from Foss reservoir.
Will Foss let us take? You're going to get there.
We have not discussed that.
We haven't discussed that, okay.
Mr. Marcy, what we do is we take a 50,000 altitude, feet altitude look at water supply availability in the area. You have raw water rights in Foss and you have treated water rights from Foss. So we felt prudent to look at that alternative. The third source is the Washtau River alluvium. This is the shallow groundwater that is in and near the river. The fourth source is the Rush Springs Aquifer, which is much deeper and higher quality water. Speaking of the quality, let's take a look at just a snapshot of the quality. We talked about this a couple of months ago too when we were looking at emergency options. Foss water treatment plant is a very advanced water treatment plant. It's dated. There's been new technologies and improvements come along, but it's still a very advanced water treatment plant from even today's standards. And the reason it is, is because the Foss reservoir has very high total dissolved solid value today. It's a lot, it's real salty water. The target TDS, total dissolved solids concentration is about 500 milligrams per liter. That's what we like to have, that or less in our drinking water. The water before it's treated is upwards of 1,500 milligrams per liter. The water out there is also very hard. Washtau River alluvium, same scenario, shouldn't be too surprising. They kind of feed each other there. TDS around 2,000 milligrams per liter. It also has very, extremely hard water, ranking in about 1,800 milligrams per liter with a target of about 100. So it's very hard water. It also has high sulfates, about 1,800 milligrams per liter with a target of about 2 figures. So substantial treatment is required to bring the Washtau River alluvium in service. We have wells in the Washtau River alluvium right now. Gulfport's well is one of those wells. The other new source is the Rush Springs Aquifer. There's not a lot of local data, there's no local data, on the Rush Springs Aquifer. You guys have a well in the Rush Springs Aquifer, Agni Park, I think is referred to. So some data should be done there before any major decisions are made. Some analysis should be done. But we do have a lot of study on the Rush Springs Aquifer. USGS has done a tremendous amount of work on that Aquifer estimating water quality data and certain yields for how much gallons per minute you can get on the Aquifer. Querying that data, I want you to remember that's kind of the Aquifer as a whole, which kind of stretches from here all the way down into south-central, southwestern Oklahoma. Ranges anywhere from a TDS of 488 and a hardness of 340. Those aren't bad. Remember the target for TDS is under 500 and it's under 500. And the hardness is a little bit high, but certainly manageable. And there may be some nitrate and sulfide levels that could be undesirable. But again, we just don't have that local data. But the USGS study gives us hope that it's probably pretty high quality water. With regard to quantity on these two groundwater options, the Washtau and the Rush Springs, the Washtau is much nastier water because it's shallower. But because it's shallower and it's adjacent to the river, you can get a lot more volume out of it. Typical well in the Washtau range about 1,000 gallons per minute. The Rush Springs Aquifer, higher quality, it's deeper, that's why it's higher quality. There's some confining layers in between that help purify that water. But because it's deeper and it has less recharge, it has a much lower yield. So the gallons per minute on a well out of the Rush Springs might be about 100 gallons per minute versus a thousand in the Washtau. So what are?
How many were there?
There were about 600, I think, 600 to 700 maybe in the Rush Springs. Source one, Foss water treatment plant, finished water from Foss, drinking water from Foss. Alternative 1A that we evaluated is to do nothing. The city continues to do what it's doing. We're going to detail about that all in a minute here. Alternative 1B is to invest in the expansion of the Foss water treatment plant so they can increase their capacity and provide you more finished water. Source two is the raw water option from Foss. The raw water option, again, is broke up into two separate options. One is alternative 2A to pump water from the Foss reservoir directly into Clint Lake. Clint Lake is the wide spot in the line. This is an average day type scenario. Now, the quality of the water in Clint Lake is much better than the quality of the water in the Foss reservoir. So we'll talk about what implications that has moving forward. Alternative 2B is to pump raw water from the Foss reservoir into a ground storage tank located at the Clint water treatment plant. That's for a max day scenario. So you don't pollute Clint Lake, you can only fill this ground storage tank on a max day when you need. Both of those options require some treatment improvements at your current well. We'll explain why here. Continuing to introduce the alternatives here. Source three, the Washtau alluvium wellfield. Alternative 3A, pump groundwater from the Washtau to Clint Lake for treatment. This is going to be a reoccurring theme here where we take the raw water from Foss, the raw water from Washtau, the raw water from the Rush Springs Aquifer, and we take it to your terminal reservoir, your routing pool, your wide spot in the line, which is Clint Lake. So alternative 3A is Washtau to Clint Lake. Alternative 3B is a new water treatment plant specifically designed just for the Washtau. That water treatment plant would not be on your existing water treatment plant site. It'd be here somewhere near the Washtau River, near the Gulfport area. That's a max day scenario. It's on demand. We need more water now. Our situation in Clint Lake is bad. We're using all we can use from Foss. Let's fire up the new water treatment plant, pull water out of Washtau. And then finally, the fourth alternative or the fourth source is the Rush Springs Aquifer. With alternative A, depositing. With alternative A, depositing Rush Springs aquifer water into the terminal reservoir, the wide spot in the line, that being Clinton Lake. And alternative 4B is the on-demand or max day where we pull water directly out of the Rush Springs aquifer and put it right into the system. Alternative 1A, do nothing. This is an alternative based on the 2062 average day need of 2.6 million gallons per day. Under this scenario, you have really two water supply sources, the same one you have right now. We evaluated this alternative with a shift in Clinton Lake management strategy from what you, how you operated it last year. This prioritizes the use of FOSS water first, and then relies on Clinton Lake water as your, how you trim when you need additional water. So this will be more expensive from an O&amp;M standpoint because you're going to buy more water than you have typically been buying. But you're going to hopefully provide more water on reserve in Clinton Lake. We don't like this option in a max day scenario because it only provides 2.6 million gallons per day. You're still missing that max day amount. If you try to meet that max day for several max days in a row out of Clinton Lake, you're going to see the same thing you saw last year. It's going to continue to believe. You have several years of running drought, it's probably not going to recover. And again, that's all, it's safely assumed, but it's not, it's not written in stone yet because there's no yield analysis. The do nothing, alternative 1A, I mentioned the two water sources. Here, on the right-hand side of this figure here is the two water sources, the FOSS reservoir and how they get to your distribution system, Clinton Lake, and how it gets to your distribution system. Same way you operate today, nothing new here. We also, we didn't evaluate, we didn't bet on this happening in the numbers and the cost. But we do think as part of this option, if this is the option the city chooses to move forward with, that you should pursue legal options to acquire the water rights that other communities aren't using, that are member cities of the Master Conservation District. That's a lot of legal, and it's a lot of political involvement to get that done. But it's our understanding that there are allocations that aren't being used, and you guys need more. So that's an avenue that you might want to consider as the recommended option. And then like we mentioned, adjust the management strategy of Clinton Lake. Increasing the reliance on FOSS is priority one. Maintaining adequate levels in the lake and utilize Clinton water only when Clinton Lake is full.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
The idea of acquiring someone's unused treated supply, right now that supply is available to purchase. You're just talking about locking it down to where it becomes Clinton's untreated supply?
Or a hybrid of both there. And the attorney might speak to this better than I could, but maybe an option where if they're not using it, you get the first right to it. Or even better, you can just give it. No? Please do. Alternative 1B, expand the FOSS water treatment plant. Remember, under max day scenarios, what's the yield on Clinton Lake? Zero, just like right now. All our aims are in one basket here. Everything's got to come through FOSS, and it's all going to be drinking, it's all going to be the drinking water through FOSS. It's all going to come through the water treatment plant to meet that 5.3 million gallon per day from, that means your 2060 max day, 2062. This will require significant investment in their treatment works. The water quality will be better after the investment. And the city can maximize Clinton Lake use without a fear of a water shortfall. So under this scenario, although it's not shown in the pie chart here, staff can suck down Clinton Lake if they want to. They can use it first if they want to, and they can suck it down. Because under this option, you have invested in treatment infrastructure at FOSS to pick up the pace whenever you run out of water.
Are you talking about the city of Clinton being laterally investing or investing under the FOSS?
Again, that would probably require some legal determination. I would think that you would be responsible for that 3.1 million dollars, 3.1 million gallons that you need would probably be on, you would pay for that. But I'm not sure, you know, how that's, how that contract, for future improvements, how that contract addresses future investment in that, in the MCD.
The point that, the reason I asked the question is because you can't really expand FOSS and use Clinton unilaterally. FOSS's funding mechanism would be... Go ahead, I appreciate it.
Alternative 2A, this is the raw water option in the FOSS reservoir. For the average day scenario, in the year 2062, you need 2.6 million gallons per day. This scenario adds a third water source to your portfolio. This scenario prioritizes FOSS drinking water first, only till you reach your take or pay amount in your current contract. I think it's .69? .69 MGD is your take or pay amount from FOSS. Make sure you're using that always because you're going to pay for it regardless. Then optimize Clinton Lake. When you get into a situation where you're low, not like you are today, but again, with a detailed management strategy, you get low in Clinton Lake, then you exercise the third water source, which is pumping raw water from FOSS into Clinton Lake. Okay?
Could I ask you a question back here? Could I ask you a question?
I think so.
Yeah, go ahead.
What kind of capacity would you have to have to have storage in the raw water pump in Clinton Lake to be able to have unimpeded water process through Clinton Lake? Because if you pump it purely in the lake, you're going to have absorption and evaporation.
Absolutely.
So if you put it in a tank, can you have continuous flow into a certain sized tank and the right amount of water going out?
Absolutely.
What's a tank?
And these calculations consider that. I know that the line size coming from FOSS is a 12-inch line in this scenario. And the reason it's sized that is so that we can deliver more water than we actually need because of evaporation, absorption, so forth.
What kind of storage capacity do you have to have, when you mentioned the tank before, to...
The tank is in the next option. The tank is the max day.
My fault.
Okay. We don't, to the point of the yield analysis though, we really don't know the actual storage volume of Clinton Lake because there's no detailed yield analysis. So again, this pumps raw water from FOSS reservoir, deposits it in Clinton Lake. Guess what happens since water quality in Clinton Lake when that happens? It goes down. So there's upgraded, there's upgrade costs associated with your current water treatment plant in order to treat that water. And there's the schematic on what that looks like. Alternative 2B, this is the on-demand. This is, we've used all we can use out of Clinton Lake, and we're uncomfortable continuing to pull it down any lower. So we need to deliver water to the water treatment plant in a hurry to meet this peak day. The line size associated with that project is a 24-inch because we're pumping a whole lot more water on an on-demand need rather than just a little bit every day. Remember the size of the storage vessel?
We were looking at a million gallons.
Million gallons storage tank. And really, that size isn't, it's not because you want to have a million gallons on-site. That is basically just a wide spot in the line to allow the pumps to move that water through the water treatment plant. But you can't just terminate a pipe at the water treatment plant. Did I answer your question, sir, or is there something to debate? So any questions on the on-demand option there? We just have a tank at the water treatment plant that we store it in rather than contaminating Clinton Lake. Alternative 3A is the Washtau River option. That pumps Washtau River water to the lake. Average day scenario to meet 2.6 million gallons per day. Priority one, take or pay from FOSS. Priority two, pull on Clinton Lake until you get to an acceptable low level. If demand is still increasing, turn on the pumps to pull water out of the Washtau alluvium and deposit it in Lake Clinton. Because you deposited it in Lake Clinton, this option requires an upgrade to Clinton Water Treatment Plant. The technology involved in whether it's FOSS water or Washtau water is very advanced. I talked to you last, a couple of months ago about reverse osmosis technology to provide the quality of water necessary. There's a lot of reject or water that's wasted. A lot that goes through that RO process and just gets spent as part of the treatment process. The disposal of that wasted water is difficult. Depositing that wasted water, which is extremely concentrated, with salts, that's what you're removing.
Isn't that a problem at FOSS now?
It is a problem at FOSS now. They waste a lot of water. They do. Fruit wood is low, but that's just, that's the nature of having to treat that quality of water. It's not anything that FOSS is necessarily doing wrong. So we look at disposal options. Discharging to the Washtau is probably not a safe bet because it's so salty. Deep well injection is an option. It's a long, continuous permitting process and a very expensive route. So we chose to post it out in evaporation ponds. I can't think of a better place to put a evaporation pond in western Oklahoma, especially last year. So we've included evaporation ponds as a disposal method for the waste. Included some assumed land costs and so forth to house those ponds. Alternative 3B is a new water treatment plant to treat Washtau River alluvium. Again, remember, this is a max day scenario where Clinton Lake is unreliable. We're using 41% of that 5.3 million gallons per day from FOSS, and we happen to go get 59% more from somewhere else, and in this case, it's the Washtau River alluvium. This is different than, differs from 3A in that we're not depositing that Washtau water into the lake. We're treating it right at the source and then pumping it into the distribution system. Very advanced water treatment plant. Again, we have the evaporation ponds to deal with. The flow rates from the Washtau are anticipated to be about 1,000 gallons per minute to meet this requirement that you have in the year 2062, approximating about seven wells. Alternative 4A, this is the final new source. This is Rush Springs aquifer. The average day scenario, again, prioritizes your take or pay from FOSS first. Then you ride along there with Clinton Lake second until you get to an acceptable low amount. Drought is continuing, demand is still up. You turn on the Rush Springs aquifer well pumps, and you deliver that water to Clinton Lake. Now, in this scenario, we don't have dirty water going into the lake. Water's in pretty good shape. So we don't have to invest in a significant amount of new treatment infrastructure at your current plant under this scenario. Again, the anticipated yield from the Rush Springs aquifer is only going to provide about 100 GPM per wellhead. So under this scenario, it's eight wells, eight new wells. There's a schematic on how the water gets to, gets to town.
Eight wells, would generate how much water?
The deficit is... 640,000 gallons per day. 33,000 gallons.
If that, that wouldn't leave me with our water problem if that's all we did.
No, that's your, that's your third tool in the toolbox. Tool one is FOSS, take or pay.
Right.
Tool two is Clinton Lake. Tool three is the Rush Springs aquifer.
So you're saying we have to... Combination?
Yes, all these require a combination of all of it. Alternative 4B is the Rush Springs aquifer on-demand or the max day scenario to meet that 5.3 MGD. Assuming Clinton Lake is unreliable, zero MGD from Clinton Lake. In this option, you're taking the full amount that you currently have from FOSS, which is about 41% of the need, and you're directly injecting the remainder, or 59% of that need, from the Rush Springs aquifer. Not going to the lake on this one. It's directly injected. Because it's directly injected, there will be some, we anticipate some minor wellhead treatment that will be involved. Certainly chlorination and maybe some other minor treatments, so we've included some costs associated with that. Again, remember, the water quality in the Rush Springs aquifer is not entirely known. We have a USGS study that has done bulk studies on the aquifer. We don't have local data that represents what the water quality would be. Under this scenario, sir, because it's max day and not average day, there's three times the wells required. There's 24 wells required on this option.
That's not option. You're talking about option 4B?
4B, that's correct. Okay, we took all those eight alternatives, and we look at them from a monetary sample, cost of those alternatives, and we look at them from a non-monetary sample, feasibility of doing the project. And we combine those two rankings and present to you which ranking won, basically, is what I'm about to go through. It doesn't mean that that's the option you choose just because it won, but it's what our analysis determined. And we've also had a workshop with the city staff and collected input from the city staff to help with those options as well. So with regard to cost, monetary valuation overview. We look at the life cycle cost for the next 25 years. And the reason we pick 25 years is because that's a relatively good timeframe to estimate the life expectancy of the infrastructure. Now, pipelines sometimes will go longer than that, obviously, but pumps, motors, treatment equipment, and so forth need a replacement cycle at least one in the 25-year planning horizon. The cost, the capital costs are made up of water treatment plants that I spoke of in the different options. Conveyance, whether it be finished water pumping or raw water pumping from the FOSS reservoir, from Washtau, or from Rush Springs, the raw water pipe. The, certainly another, another component of cost is the O&amp;M cost. How much is it going to cost to operate and maintain that 25-year lifecycle? And there's chemical costs associated with water treatment. There's disposal of sludge and so forth that all roll up into water treatment. There's the energy associated with pumping waters from FOSS or from the Washtau or, you know, 600 feet out of ground in the Rush Springs aquifer. Those are ongoing energy operation and maintenance costs. And then there's a big O&amp;M cost associated with behind treatment water from FOSS. That's included in the analysis as well. I want to stress that this is not a detailed engineering report. This is certainly not a design. I think it's been designed. There's no plans developed. There's no specifications developed. This is a planning document. So these budgets, these estimates are budgetary estimates. And because we're up here at 50,000 feet, we have to add a certain amount of contingency for things unknown, like constructing a water treatment plant on FOSS's site. There's a lot of things that we don't know about FOSS's site. It's not your site. It's not, you know, we don't have a lot of access to a lot of that information. So there's some contingencies that are added to make sure that those things hopefully are covered in the cost. So as you'll see here in a minute, the costs are of a magnitude that at least it gives you some basis for helping you make a decision. Whether it's exactly to the million dollar, this amount, it's a basis to help you make a decision. It's relative. These are the costs, and I'll start on the left with option 1A, which is do nothing. The red bar indicates O&amp;M costs, plus the blue bar, which indicates the capital cost. Do nothing in option 1A requires no capital investment. Just change your management strategy, rely more heavily on FOSS, and keep on trucking. There's some concerns about Clinton Lake being able to keep up under that scenario, as we mentioned. But anyway, it's an option nonetheless. You can see it ranked number one. The number at the top of the bar indicates where it ranked with the other eight alternatives.
As far as cost go?
It was the lowest cost. Alternative 1B, which is to invest in water treatment plant infrastructure at FOSS, was a little over 75 million dollars, and that includes O&amp;M and capital. And it was the most expensive lifecycle option, long-term. Alternative 2A is raw water deposited into Clinton Lake, ranked number fifth. Alternative 2B, ranked sixth. That is raw water to, from FOSS to the onsite storage vessel, ranked sixth. Alternative 3A, which is raw water from the Washtau, deposited in Clinton Lake, ranked fourth. 3B, a new water treatment plant to treat Washtau directly from... 3B, a new water treatment plant to treat Washataw directly from the source, not depositing water, ranked seventh. Alternative 4A was the Rush Springs Aquifer delivering or from that aquifer to Clinton Lake was the second lowest overall cost. And Rush Springs Aquifer on demand or pumping the Rush Springs Aquifer directly into the distribution systems and minor treatment was the third lowest overall lifecycle cost. Yes, sir.
You pick one of these and like one of these lake things or, but you pick one of these and then... How do we know we're not gonna, we spend all this money and in twenty years they go, these wells don't pump, there's no... Is there any thing that, any way to analyze that at all or?
There, there is, and it's, it's really, it's part of the, the non-monetary evaluation that we're going to talk about here today. You know, reliability and so forth that help you make your decision, not just based on cost. Some fewer factors, if you will. Let's get right there, let's get to it. You want to give the rest of the presentation? You're on it already. Non-monetary valuation, cost is certainly important, maybe it would be most important item to consider moving forward as, as the council... But there are other factors that, that weigh into this decision. We have, I, we have shortlisted about eight, eight or nine different factors that we think, that we considered and we talked to the staff about. And, and I understand you guys have draft copies of the report. There's already been primarily demand, population and cost changes to that version of the report. But this non-monetary section has not changed. So I encourage you later tonight, or maybe first thing in the morning, to take a look at these non-monetary factors. And I'm just going to read through what they are real quick, and I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time defining them. But I want you to know that staff with the City of Clinton and certainly our staff have spent a lot of time thinking about each one of these factors. And of those eight alternatives, which one of those alternatives is better or worse for each factor? Okay? And before I do that, each factor is weighted. Reliability should probably be more important than, I don't know, what... Implementability for, for like, for like pumping water out of the Rush Springs Aquifer. Drilling a well and pumping a hundred gallons per minute is fairly implementable. Okay? So it's not really weighted that heavy, okay? It's kind of a, an easy one. Whereas redundancy, if that well goes dry, should have a higher weight, okay? So each one of these factors that I'm about to read has different weights. And it's all described in detail in the report. The, the factors include environmental impacts. The plan should minimize environmental impacts such as extreme changes in current land use. These, these are items like the, you know, if you have a pipeline going through a certain land use area, it's going to disrupt that, we need to consider that. Where are the evaporation ponds and how do they impact the environment? Are we disrupting wetlands and so forth, those kind of things weighing into environmental impacts. Flexibility, how flexible is the plan? Consider potential expandability, are you boxing yourself in? Is it flexible enough to expand in the future? Let's see, future implications, recommended plan must have the ability for expansion beyond the planning horizon. Implementability, the plan must have the ability to be integrated into the existing system infrastructure. Bring it in some harebrained idea that this doesn't mix well with the other pieces of the pie, you know, it's, it's an implementable. Let's see. Public acceptance, this is, this is very important, when public acceptance is critical for implementation of any plan. The goal of public acceptance is to develop a safe, reliable, independent water supply for the citizens of Clinton. People want their water to be safe, they want it to taste good, and they want to be able to afford it. So public acceptance kind of weighs into, you know, is the plan affordable? Redundancy, the plan should include redundancy in the event that a source becomes temporarily impaired. Foss water treatment plant...
Goes down.
Goes down because of the tornado. It's the only piece of the pie. It's going to score very poorly when we weight that factor for redundancy. Let's see, reliability, the water resources yield must be sustainable for the planning horizon. Water quality, the plan must produce the best finished water quality. Water rights, water rights are an important issue and the city would, would like to hold water rights to the future source that is recommended. That's kind of what you're, you know, trying to get some allocation that's not used. It'd be nice to just have those permanently rather than can we get them when they're available. So taking into account those, those factors and weighting them as I, as I mentioned, resulted in the following, the following graph. The, a ranking of one is better than a ranking of eight. So it goes, the lower the bar, the better the ranking. The top of, at the top of the bar represents where each alternative finished with regard to weighting all those factors. Do nothing was last. Although do nothing is attractive, very attractive from a short-term standpoint, we're going to, I'm fixing to stress that to you here in a couple of slides. Long-term, I mean, this is a long-term water supply valuation, we feel like you need to do something else besides what you're doing right now. 1B is expansion of the Foss reservoir, or, I'm sorry, the Foss water treatment plant. It ranked second to last. Again, it doesn't really diversify your portfolio, you still have Foss and Clinton, and Clinton Lake. And there's some challenges about how do we invest in that plan? Contractually, how do we invest in that plan? Maybe not unaccountable challenges, maybe not huge hurdles, but just unknown from your engineers at this point. Alternative 2A was purchasing, or acquiring raw water from the Foss reservoir and depositing it in Lake Clinton, ranked fourth. 2B, which is the on-demand, the onsite storage vessel to treat Foss raw water, ranked third. I'm going to move over to 3B, which ranked sixth, that was on-demand treatment of the Washataw, that was a new water treatment plant at the Washataw River Lagoon. 4B was on-demand treatment of the Rush Springs Aquifer, that was the small, that was the twenty-four wells with some minor treatment in each wellhead, pumping directly into the distribution system. The, the two options that finished non-monetarily, first and second. 3A was second, which is Washataw being deposited in the Clinton Lake. And 4A, which is Rush Springs Aquifer, deposited in Clinton Lake. Very little impacts for the items that I just read, I mean, they all have some impact, both of these options do. But they were overall less in the heavily weighted factors, that again, I strongly encourage you to take a look at. And I think kind of part of the reason why 4A may have won out over 3A, it's a little better quality water. There's less unknowns associated with it. And it's, it's, it fits a little bit better with what you're doing right now rather than adding this new salty source that you have to treat. So just a lot of, a lot of things kind of weighed into how it ended up number one, but nonetheless, it did end up number one. And so this, hopefully is, I can explain this. On the left-hand side, where it says increasing cost, the higher the star for the alternative, the higher the star, the more cost. On the bottom part of the, the plot, as you move to the right, the further to the right, the better it's ranked from a non-monetary standpoint. So you want things, you want alternatives that are located in that bottom right-hand square. And it's the best non-monetary scenario based on the factors considered. And it's low on the chart, meaning it's the lowest cost alternative as well. Top left-hand corner was the stuff, when you combine the non-monetary and the monetary, that stuff ended up bad. Bottom right-hand corner, that stuff ended up good. So when you combine monetary valuation and non-monetary valuation, 4A is almost in the optimal position as a, as a long-term alternative for it. So, our recommendations tonight. And this, this report is still in draft form, again, encourage you to spend as much time as you need, evaluate that, come back to us with comments and revisions as necessary. We immediately, in the year 2012, recommend that you implement and continue alternative 1A for do nothing option. However, we think that you should shift your management strategy, increasing the amount of money you're going to spend on purchased water, okay? But prioritize Foss finished water first, let the lake recover. Pursue legal agreements for additional rights to treat Foss water, any unused allocations from member cities that, that are out there and available. Allow for maximum recovery of Clinton Lake as long as possible, try to, try to stay above it as long as you can. Of course, that, that involves some, some conservation efforts like we talked about a couple of months ago. Remember the irrigation spike that's going to hit here in May, June, July, August, and then dip back down? Get the word out, you know, and demand is, is going to be hard to meet this year and, and low landscape requirements, low water landscape requirements, those things. Also perform a detailed yield analysis for Clinton Lake and develop a water resource management strategy to minimize the effects of drought. I mentioned why, now's a good time to do the yield analysis with the lake being as low as it is. We can do a flyover survey now. That won't require a lot of field work, installation of some, some level measurement within the, within the lake itself. Taking those, that data from the survey and from the continuous level measurement, using meson that data for inflows and rainfalls and precipitation and so forth. To help you, help you get a little bit better handle on what the actual safe yield of, of Clinton Lake is because you're calling. I'm using zero for the max day scenario. And along with the conservation effort is to strongly consider adoption of a drought mitigation plan. This is not a long-term water supply plan, this is a totally separate item, much smaller, less, less in-depth. But it identifies some triggers on when to make certain recommendations to the public. It starts as a recommendation, stage four drought conditions. We recommend that you be conscious about how much water you use. Stage three, odd even water. Stage four, hand water, I mean, stage two, hand water. Stage one, no water. You know, just get that documented and adopt that as a council and enforce it with the staff. That's very common in, in all, especially in the areas of climate that we, that we live in. Now, looking ahead, which is the goal of this study. Alternative 4A is very attractive. It, it represents, oh, you know, do nothing has no capital investments. The other seven all have capital investment, and this by far had the lowest capital investment as well. The blue bar on 4A, you know, upwards of fifteen million dollars in capital investment. It's the most economical option that reduces reliance on Clinton Lake. And water quality, I, I have a concern here, but it, it's just unknown. The water quality is not defined yet in your region. The water quality for the aquifer as a whole looks very appealing. But we need to get some, some test results from ACME and maybe engage some local leaders to do some test holes. And while they're doing those test holes, to not only confirm the hundred gallon per minute yield analysis, but also pull water, uh, water table samples throughout the strata to find out what the water quality is. Lowest capital cost I mentioned, and it results in no investment in a new or an upgrade or an expanded water treatment plant. You get to just keep riding along with your current, your current treatment facility and, and the staff doesn't have to adapt to a new type of water treatment. That's all. Questions?
What else are you talking about when you look at the... Grab one here, 4A, where would most of those wells be located philosophically? Are they closer Clinton, closer to Clinton Lake, or to be determined?
Well, ultimately to be determined for their, their actual destination, but I'll give you a general, I have an air delay here. I'll give you a general location. Ian, can you speak to that while I'm trying to find?
Sure thing. The city of Clinton is right on the north western boundary of the Rush Springs Aquifer, with the USGS officially delineating the boundary of the aquifer. So the, the wells would likely be around the town proper. Now, one of the things that we do with this option was utilize an existing supply line that comes from Clinton Lake to the, to the town, which has been out of service for a long time. They have a lot of great trenchless rehabilitation technologies that we can take advantage of that for a very low cost can bring that line back into service. And that, that would allow us to convey that water back out to the lake for, for trade.
That's pretty good, that's my second question, you've already answered it.
Generally, where it is...
You're the third.
Uh, yeah, generally where it is...
Source four.
Generally in that area that's flowing.
Yeah.
Or is it before the right side of the...
The right, the top right-hand corner area of that bowl.
What did you say, we had a well in the up for ACME pond?
You do.
Yes.
Is there any, are there, are there any problems in acquiring water rights to the Rush Springs Aquifer? I mean, it, it is, if you, I mean, how many wells can we put on ACME face to?
We don't anticipate any, any problems obtaining water rights that weighed into the non-monetary evaluation. Water rights, volume of water that you can draw is based on land area that you can dedicate for that withdrawal. You guys are in good shape.
Other questions from council?
I'm trying to digest all this.
That's a lot of information, I, I had no idea, I mean, I had no thought process that we would do anything of an action nature tonight. So it takes a while with you through it. And as you mentioned too, I think there's still some ongoing upgrades and updates to that, that information.
Absolutely.
Any questions for anyone in the audience, I want to give you a chance if you have one.
I would have plenty of questions, but now I understand that we're going to consider this here to move forward for a...
Yeah, we're going to, this, what we tried to do with the short-term, and I'll speak for myself and therefore more council people, but my, my concern is... I think we got here, we kind of got on a bus and we weren't, we weren't really sure where we were going. In that, my experience in Western Oklahoma has been the last thirty years where it rained and it rained and it rained. And when I saw that graph where the fifties, the forties, the thirties, my, my stomach's been killing me ever since. We need a long-term plan. And, and you know, if it would rain, if it has rained, if it will rain, we'll, we'll fix Clinton Lake. But I think what this has demonstrated is we have to get a long-term vision of where we're going water-wise. So to answer your question, I think that's what we're doing. We're trying to see what are our options to bring some more water online. I know, uh, Steve has got some other ideas, some things that have popped up and options and concepts. And I, I think the point I would make too is I, with what I've seen us do to Washataw, or to the Foss water system, they have to have Clinton's support. We're the biggest gorilla in the cage financially, we can't, and I'll, I'm as guilty as anybody, we can't play the game we've been playing with him over the last few years. And I say that, it's my own fault because I didn't realize it doesn't always rain in Western Oklahoma. I'm not always the brightest guy. So with what we see, we have to fully support Foss, make sure we take our allotment and make sure that they're aware that we're committed to what they're doing for their reward with their plan. Financially, we can't go back to the days where, in my opinion, where we do sixty percent from someplace else and we do thirty percent from Foss. Because Foss cannot financially do what they need to do to supply Clinton and the other people. So if it's, you know, and I think what we're looking at here is what do we do on those four million, four, four point four million gallon days? What can we bring online that will address that situation for that three-month period? More so than can we go spend millions of dollars to build a new water treatment facility? That means Foss is even more, financially, we need to push Foss even more down to just what we have to take. Does that overspeak anything there, guys?
That's good.
I think...
But what we're, what they say is this is a guideline, you know? Our manager will evaluate this report and come back to the council with recommendations. I mean, we're not making any decisions now.
Right, let me ask one other question. Who has said legally that we can buy raw water from Foss reservoir? Is this something to throw out or have they offered that they would sell us raw water? If that hasn't been looked into, it would only need to be considered, because they might say no.
But I think that's, if that is an option, it needs to be discussed to see if we even need to go that route. There are some legal ramifications and I'm, I mean, you know, Foss, the agreement, Foss agreement, we may or may not have, or we say we do or we don't, I think that's up to and to. But we need to look at that, is that's an option, if that's the place we need to go.
I can just speak to why it's, why it's an alternative at all. One of the things that we look at, I mentioned we get up... One of the things that we look at, I mentioned we get up fifty thousand foot and we look at water supply in the area. We started at Burns Flat, I mentioned that, early on, or early last fall, because you had that, that was already available to you. You have Clinton, or you have, excuse me, the Foss water treatment plant, you have a contract for a certain amount of water from that Foss water treatment plant. There was a couple of alternatives that looked at that. It would be ridiculous not to look at it, because you already have a contract for it. You also have a contract that says you have a certain amount of raw water in Foss reservoir. It would not be prudent for us to ignore that, so that's why we evaluate.
I think the problem with that philosophically is, if anybody's been up to Foss Lake lately, I'm either going to have to get my boat out, and I haven't seen it since the rain, so hopefully it's helped, I mean, I have to get my boat out of the dock, go park it somewhere, I'm going to have to watch it get high soon before I can even get it out. I don't know that that makes sense to suck additional gallons out of Foss, although we're only talking about the high usage points, but I don't know that it makes sense when you start to talk about that from a philosophical, that's probably why it fell down on the overall to take water out of Foss when they're already, you know, having to pump five million down river to produce two million, or whatever the ratio is. It's pretty brutal. Yes?
It looks to me like if you took a survey of our area in western Oklahoma, Weatherford relies groundwater, no reservoir. Burns Flat has wells they rely on. Canute apparently has wells they rely on. Elk City has a small lake and wells that they rely on. So it looks to me like it would make sense, us consider, first off, can we get enough water close to our Clinton Lake by adding wells, and we control all of that, we're not working with anybody else. That would be the best route to be looked at.
And I think that's the option that'd come with the problem we run into. In a nutshell, Weatherford has problems with their water supply, arsenic. I mean, you can't just say groundwater is the answer to everything. I think a combo of the two, but I think what they've come to with this review is we need to look at what groundwater we can use to supplement our facilities we currently have, so.
And if we make a better decision, if we have all kinds of alternatives to look at, when it's all said, then we'll get a better decision, so.
What exactly do we need to do to start some type of a yield analysis survey? I mean, what, wouldn't that be, that obviously at some point, that's kind of a priority to get really anything kind of tied down, is to actually get some numbers that we can actually work at.
I think if you'd authorize us to discuss that, and Steve, we could work through that and figure out what the timeframe, it's probably a year-long study, take into account the different seasonal changes and so forth. And come back to you with a proposal for that.
I would suggest.
At your next meeting. I was already talking to Michael about this in our meeting, I mean, we, I sat down about three hours last week with Arnold and the team here, and we talked about that. We realized we need to know, know that information, and then that's something we'll bring back to you. As far as this whole package, I mean, this is the first, first of many steps, but this is a step that needed to happen.
Steve, you guys have taken a very wise approach to this plan. We've really delivered three different pieces. At the end of tonight, there was the Burns Flat, there was the emergency, and now the long-term. A water master plan is typically made up of several pieces, and you can do it all at once, or you can find out where you're headed with the completion of each piece. And that's the option that the city has chosen to take, I think, through, it's just the next step.
Any questions, council? Questions from the audience? Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
I think it gives us definitely something to chew on, and a lot of reading material, and I'll read through some of it. Definitely, I need to have a cup of coffee with Ricky.
We recall that, Stephanie, again, we've made some revisions in the population estimates due to that reserve capacity, and that has trickled into some of the different costs to what I presented tonight. You have the first draft that we reviewed with the staff, and so.
Suffice to say, the costs at this point are very high, this guy.
Absolutely.
Just a general overview.
And like I said, it's irrelevant, it's relative, it's for the basis of decisions.
Yep.
It's not your main reason.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all for coming out.
Thank you.
I want to figure out how to get this back where it went. Yeah, just trying to. You can't see it with them, you can't see the bottom? Okay. Wow. City manager's report for the Clinton Public Works Authority.
Well, I'm going to add, Liz, we had voice last week, and I thought it was good timing for, we typically talk about it every time we have a meeting, but kind of give a status of Clinton Lake, aren't you, and it's quickly?
Well, the past week or what are eight, nine days, we've had a one-inch rain, a half-inch. The half-inch rain, the last rain we had, came down in about twenty minutes, so we got some runoff. End of the lake, the lake is up about four to six inches. South pond is still running over. The west pond, I believe, is about two foot from running over, so things are looking up, we just need to keep. It's more.
I think you got more than a half inch, because, you know, Mark Bill was saying, we filled a pond up that had been dry for two years, and.
That's because it came right, it dumped right down. What we go off of, Jeremy and the guys out at the treatment plant, they have a gauge right out there on the side of the pole, and that's.
Well, it came down kind of sideways, didn't it?
I just want to say something about that, if I don't mind. He's got a makeshift gauge that he's using, and he's going out, and he's reading, and it's that kind of information that we need on a continuous basis, combined with the survey of the lake, to predict how the lake will respond when rainfall occurs, okay? Rather than just a rule of thumb or a tape-type analysis. That's what the detailed yield analysis, a perfect transition. I mean, we could model that with the survey data and a continuous monitoring gauge to make better estimates about what the lake will yield. Sorry for the interruption.
And I'm surprised the next question's always, how much did we get? We have no idea. We estimate there's around a hundred million gallons of water set around Clinton Lake, but if we had it, we would know. We have a hundred and nineteen, whatever, exactly, with this plan. Now we're just guessing.
Do you have some questions?
No, I think I just, I'd sum it up, basically, our philosophy has not changed currently. We are writing the plan briefly because of some upgrades we're making due to damage we had, but our philosophy currently, until we need Clinton Lake, we're using Foss, basically nearly a hundred percent, and we'll continue that philosophy as we try to see Clinton Lake replenish itself and hope Mother Nature helps us in that effort. But that really sums it up for tonight, another call.
Has worse Foss in their process? I know they've been kind of hammering through it, making due diligence.
Well, they currently are still trying to find an engineer to work with, they're going to interview some more, they've interviewed quite a few at this point. They've got a consultant on board, I mean, they've got a good plan, I mean, again, these plans take time, and I think they're looking at some options that can increase the volume that they currently have, expand, you know, their current capacity is a little bit limited, and try to, and they're working with DQ and some options, so that, you know, I try to attend those meetings along with Arnold and try to work with Foss on a regular basis, that obviously, we're a team. We are a team with Foss, and we will continue that effort to work with them, with our long-term plan, their long-term plan, I think we've got a good direction, and hopefully this will come out a good direction for many years, not just the current, you know, issue we're in.
I just know as a citizen, I like the water to turn on when I turn the tap. I like to flush and roll it, so when I start to think about a problem at Foss that takes days to fix, we need a, we need a long-term plan, and hopefully we're moving in the right direction. Thank you, Gerber. Anything else, Steve?
That's it.
Audience participation, Clinton Public Works Authority, if you have a question under the Public Works Authority, welcome to voice it at this time. If not, we will have a section under the City of Clinton for general questions. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn Clinton Public Works Authority.
Someone.
Trustee Hewland?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodeau?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes, dress slower, we're going back, guys, if you didn't come out. We're not responsible for tickets. We'll pick that up. We'll open up the regular meeting with Clinton Industrial Authority, take and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Absolutely. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Hewland?
Yes.
Trustee Rodeau?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes, first action item, consider a set retail sales agreement with Mr. Modi, Keaton Modi. Steve, you want to give us another overview? I think we've had some information.
Yeah, council, I appreciate, like, Keaton Modi, Modi, I'm sorry, I always pronounce it wrong.
I'm mad about that, too.
Is here tonight, there was, we had, he brought us a, well, a proposal to purchase some property, nine acres, it sits just south of I-40, Red Bee Drive and Chapman Road. There was some concern about the property value, I had that evaluated by Jimmy Johnson's, he, as you can see, the value of the property, which was in line with what the city purchased the property a couple of years ago. So, in negotiations with Mr. Modi, pending your approval, we'd like to allow him to purchase the nine acres for seventy-one thousand dollars. If he begins construction within eighteen months, if not, revert back to the authority. Any future property, unused property that he would sell, we would split those proceeds with the city, and I think Keaton's here to, if you have any questions for him, this looks like to be a good, a really good pro-business direction for both us and his option, I think he's been, he can speak to this, he's been talking to La Quinta, and it looks like the rate of move forward, and his financing and stuff, so we recommend tonight we sell this property, begin the deed and have a contract drawn up by our city attorney to sell the property to Keaton Modi. Keaton, you want to address the Council?
I already have nothing to say, but I just wanted to accept that contract. If we do have La Quinta built, whenever we build on, we'd like to reserve about four acres for the La Quinta, and then have the five acres, and if we don't develop the five acres, we sell it, or we'll go from there. I don't want any time constraints on the undeveloped land, and once we get the La Quinta going, then we'll go from there, very much, but we'd like to, if we don't develop it, we sell the land.
Pretty straightforward, I think, the fifty percent of sale proceeds if they don't develop it. I think the conversations that Steve's had with Mr. Modi, he'd like to, I'd like to see it developed, so. Any other questions from council related to this particular retail sales agreement, real estate sales agreement? Question or comment from anyone in the audience?
I didn't understand the total amount that we were talking about.
Recommendation from the city manager, seventy-one thousand?
Seventy-one?
Seventy-one thousand.
Is that what it was appraised at?
Yes. Yeah, the problem with the appraisal is that you really can't find anything comparable. What is comparable? That's in line with the appraise. Any other questions or comments?
I have one more comment. Why don't the city just sell him the acreage that he needs, and the city keep the rights to the rest of it?
I think it is, from a business standpoint, I understand exactly what he would like to do, in the conversations, there's some other things he would like to do, he needs to get his La Quinta in place, and then depends on what the economy is and several other factors, but from my standpoint, part of the problem you run into is the way the railhead runs. It limits access to that property, and he's going to have to develop and deal with that, and I think he's already got, he's demonstrated the ability to work with a railroad in your front yard, so I don't, I don't think he has to relearn that, but from a standpoint of trying to carve up that nine acres, and, you know, if for some reason that road he doesn't use, the city will benefit from the sale. I think that's a pretty good balance between the two, because there are other things, I think, in Mr. Modi, is it, Modi? I'm just butchering your name. I'll just stay with Keaton, that's it. My only language is English. My daughter's fluent in Spanish, and she tells me to stay with the English, because I have it terrible, so. Keaton would like, he has some other things on his plate that he'd like to do, but that'll leave down the road, so. Any other questions or comments from the audience?
I'd make the motion if we follow the city manager's recommendation, sell this property to Keaton Modi for seventy-one thousand, and bring the contract back to the council.
Second.
Trustee Rodeau?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Hewland?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes, Modi. Like Modi, but Modi, I can do that.
Get her in down here, I'll probably do the same thing, but your next one. We'll look for a visit from the sitting manager, and we'll finalize in that. Good luck to you guys. Next action item, consider real estate sale agreement with TAS Trucking. Steve, you want to give?
Yeah, council, I'd like to introduce Tim Smith.
Actually, Paul.
I'm sorry.
That's our team, we're one of the business segments.
Okay, well, great, go ahead. They approached us regarding the five acres that sits at our, on Commerce Road, which was once for the Custer County Conservation Project, which did not happen, so that remains with the city now. We just recently just did this with another company, and we recommend to sell the five acres at the price we have it at, ten thousand dollars, so they can begin, and we recommend that we sell that, bring back the contract, and go forward on that. Want to say anything?
Pretty simple concept, I mean, we're looking for an expansion opportunity, our trucking industry here in Clinton has grown, and we love the community, I mean, we want to be here, and we need a little more space to operate with, want to build a nice facility to maintain our vehicles at, like they're right here.
Excited.
I'd make the motion if we follow the city manager's recommendation for selling the five acres.
Second.
Trustee Rodeau?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Hewland?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Hold on, yes. Thank you. Third action item, consider acceptance of property on South Fifth Street for future fire station site. This is more cleanup work.
Yeah, this is another more housekeeping, the mortgage for the fire station is through the industrial authority that required, and the land is being the industrial authorities, this would be a transfer to the, from the city council to the industrial authority to make that go together with the mortgage with OB and T, simple housekeeping item.
Question or comment, council? Question or comment, audience? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of property on South Fifth Street for a future fire station site.
Second.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hewland?
Yes.
Trustee Rodeau?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. City manager's report for the Clinton Industrial Authority. Entertain a motion, we have audience participation, industrial authority, if you have a question for the industrial authority, this would be the point you'd want to ask it other times, we'll have something down the road for just general questions. It's been a long tax season, guys. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Clinton Industrial Authority.
Someone.
Trustee Hewland?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodeau?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes.
Moving on to the regular meeting of Clinton City Council, we'll open it up, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodeau?
Yes.
Councilman Hewland?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. First action item, consider proclamation for Knights of Columbus. Steve, you want to give us an overview?
This is an annual proclamation that you basically do every year, mayor, and they give a lot to Special Olympics in Clinton, so we recommend you approve the proclamation.
Entertain a motion to approve the signing of this proclamation.
Second.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Hewland?
Yes.
Councilman Rodeau?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Consider acceptance of Clinton property from the Clinton Hospital Authority, this is the other side of what we did earlier, and I'll entertain a motion to accept property to the city of Clinton from the hospital authority.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Hewland?
Yes.
Councilman Roto?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Next action item, the other side of the one we just, uh, approved, consider put claim deed to transfer property for the future fire station on South Fifth to the Clinton Industrial Authority, entertain a motion to approve that particular claim deed.
Someone, take it.
Councilman Hewland?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Roto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. City manager's report for the City of Clinton?
Council, you, we've talked about some possible election due now. We can't talk about election dates, changes in the, in the charter. Lisa did some research for me, talking to the, uh, election board.